If you're ready, just let me. Fantastic. Three, two, one.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the planning commission. And on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, this meeting is called to order. I'll request staff to call the role of four commissioners who are present and not.
Yes, Commissioner Harris is absent. Commissioner Higman?
Present.
Commissioner Mercado?
Here.
Commissioner Smoothie is absent. Vice Chair Saudi?
Present.
And Chair Pravitali?
Here. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? I'm not able to see people's hands, so please speak up if you have any changes. No?
No one.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Next, we'll move the meeting to the meeting procedures. Due to COVID-19 shelter-in-place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff to address how public comment will work this evening. Leslie?
Yes, yes. Thanks to Chair Pravitali. This time, I'd like to ask everyone other than the commissioners to turn off their cameras until it is your turn to present. Thank you. And this meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube viewers. YouTube viewers are welcome to attend by telephone by calling 669-900-9128. Or watch directly through the link on the page and wish to provide comments. Please use the star nine when the chair opens the public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is deciding you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. As the chair submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or by letter has been forwarded to the planning commissioners. Enclosed caption is available for this meeting and the link is available on YouTube. And it's back to your chair.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. Excellent. Thank you so much. Let me now describe meeting procedures. We will begin with a staff report. Then we'll hear from applicant. Applicant, please try to keep your presentation more than, no more than 10 minutes. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. People on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification they have been asked to unmute themselves. Commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. Now we'll move on to urgent communication. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address the commission at this time. Leslie?
Yes, if you're wishing to speak on this item and you are phoning in, please press star nine to raise your hand. And if you are wishing to speak on this item when you're through the Zoom webinar, use the raise the hand icon. And there is no one wishing to speak on this.
Okay, great. Thanks. Well, now I'll move on to the consent calendar, which has one item. Minutes from March 29th, 2022, Santa Fe Planning Commission Meeting. So the recommended action is to approve as submitted. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
Again, if you're, and I'm not even going to say because no one's phoned in, if you're wishing to speak on the consent calendar, please use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And no one wishes to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay. If there are no comments from the commission or edits, I would entertain a motion. And would you please announce your name prior to the motion or second?
Commissioner Mercado to approve the.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Hayes.
Excellent. Thanks. Is there any discussion? If not, let's move to a roll call. It sounds like there's no discussion. Leslie, can you take a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Harris is absent. Commissioner Higman?
Here.
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Smoothie is absent. Vice Chair Saudi?
Yes.
And Chair Pravitali?
Here. And yes.
And yes. Awesome.
All right. Great. Well, now we'll move on to the public hearings. Looks fine. And this is Badgersis and also 535 to 580, 580 Jacoby Street. And it relates to Marin Sanitary Service. Marin Sanitary Services. Recycling facility to eliminate the entitled anaerobic digestion facility. Facility from 10 megawatts to 2 megawatts of bio mass 21 dash 180 dash 75 dash 76 dash 20 dash A1 and dash 82. Evan Edgar is the applicant. Just J. Garberino Jr. For Marin Sanitary Service is the owner. And Canal Neighborhood Head is also a participant. The project planner is Leslie Mendez. And the recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving use permit Plan 21 dash 005 slash UP 21 dash 024. Leslie, could we receive a staff report?
Yes, and I apologize in advance that you are seeing this view. I don't think you're just seeing the screen, but hopefully you can read it. If I do it in slide view, it takes up both my screens and then I can't see the rest of you. So anyway, good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Leslie Mendez. I am the planning manager for the city and pinch project planner. But I have the pleasure of presenting Connect Project. The original planner Steve Stafford is now retired. His last day with the city was March 30th.
Excuse me, Leslie?
Yeah?
I'm sorry. It is pretty small, but you can make it bigger if you drag down, drag down the bar that's just below the image. Yes.
Yay.
There you go. Give that.
That's much better. Yeah. And if I thought about it, I would have printed it as a PDF, but next time. And this is a little bit last minute. Anyway, so thank you for that. And anyway, the project before you is a request to amend the Marin Sanitary Services Master Use Permit to allow the elimination of the previously entitled anaerobic digestion facility and a biomass conversion facility and replace it with a biomass conversion facility with increased efficiencies and capacity. Sorry, it's not on slide one. So the Marin Sanitary Facility is located along Anderson Drive at the terminus of Jacoby Street, east of the smart right of way. The site is comprised of five adjacent parcels with a combined area of approximately 86 acres. This includes a densely forested approximately 53 acre ridgeline parcel, which is parcel E, which has a private open space easement. The MFF facility land use currently is permitted under master use permit UP 96 dash 8, which was issued by the city of Santa Fe and amended the prior use permit 92 dash 7. The city also approved at that time the planned development zoning district for the site PD 1580. The most recent master use permit, which was adopted in 2015, consolidated 12 individual use permits that had previously been issued for the city for the facility's operations over the years. This 2015 master use permit reflected a shift from waste hauling to waste recovery and diversion, allowing use of an anaerobic digestion and biomass conversion technologies, and specifically permitting the installation of an anaerobic digestion facility, processing 12,500 tons per year or TPW of food waste and green waste, and a biomass conversion facility processing 12,500 tons per year of wood chips. Neither of these facilities have been installed to date. Due to changes in technology and efficiency, MFF is requesting approval for an updated biomass conversion facility with capacity to divert approximately 18,000 bone-dry tons of wood chips per year or 25,000 wet tons per year of recovered urban wood waste and forest waste removal. The facility would generate up to 2 megawatts of bioenergy. And during the applicant's presentation, there will be a little bit more detail about the intricacies of the project. The project proposes to allow a larger biomass conversion facility to meet community and MFF's operational needs. There will be no net increase in the overall capacity as permitted by the 2015 use permit. Projected emissions from the proposed project as found in the analysis of Exhibit 4 will remain below the sequent threshold significant established by MACMID, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. All other uses of the facility are not proposed to change and would continue to operate in compliance with the existing master use permit approval. Therefore, the original findings of the master use permit do not change and can still be made related to the proposed use is in accord with the general plan, the objective of the zoning ordinance, and the purposes of the district in which the site is located. The proposed use as condition will not be detrimental to the improvement in the city or the general welfare of the city, and the proposed use complies with each of the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance. That therefore recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the use permit amendment for the Marin Sanitary Service Facility. And that is Plan 21 dash 005 UP 21 024. I will now turn it over to the applicant, Evan Edgar, who will provide more detailed project description. And we will both be available to answer questions after his presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you. My name is Evan Edgar. I'm going to share my screen now. If I can, can everybody see that screen? Hello?
Nope.
Nope. Huh. How about now? Can you see the screen? Nope. I'm going to try sharing the screen one more time. Boom, boom. Okay, I think I did it this time. All right. Thank you, everybody. Commissioners, my name is Evan Edgar. I've been the permit engineer for the Garberino since, for 30 years now, since having a recycling in 1990, there was a state law to divert 50% of the organics. And the Garberino family has stepped up. In fact, this is the first indoor dump. It was in a National Geographic back in 1988. So over the years, there have been a lot of amendments to make this place more efficient and more resource recovery. From the. Here we go. I'm trying to move my slide down. There it is. From the facility overview, looking down.
Excuse me. Would it be possible for you to go into slideshow?
Oh, okay. Custom slideshow.
No, no, just, just hit from the beginning. Or from there.
Okay.
There we go. Now you should be able to use your arrows to point.
Thank you. I'm an engineer, but I'm not a tech guy. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay. So Leslie covered the mechanics of it all. And this is how a Marin recycling center, the transfer station, and resource recovery center looks, looks from above. On the phone with me is Patty Garberino. She couldn't make it today, but she's listening in. And she's Joe's daughter, that is a general manager and of the facility.
Thank you, dear Evan. Thanks so much for the introduction.
Patty says hi.
I'm absolutely joined. I so much appreciate your allowing me to be a part of this by phone. Evan's done a magnificent job. This has been a 14-year project for us. And we're also joined on the line by our general manager, Justin Wilcox. Thank you, everyone, for your consideration.
Thank you, Patty. And I'm going to show you some of the existing operations. They have an indoor facility that takes a lot of urban green waste and lumber. It's, they make wood chips out of it. And these wood chips were going over to Central Valley and far, far away in order to burn in these old 1980 plants are being phased out due to new policies and better technology. So even though the wood chips are produced at Marin, and they take, of course, all types of stumps and other urban debris and, and, you know, and the forest sector waste as well. And out of it, they baked on different types of, you know, sawdust recovery and the soil amendment. There's a, there's a soil amendment place right next door. And plus, what I'm not, I don't have a picture of today is all the food waste is, is ground on site and is called over to Central Marin Sanitary Agency. And the food waste goes and makes biomethane. And at the, at the Central Marin, that energy is then used for heat and energy to help make that plant carbon neutral. And that's been going on for about six years. It was one of the first ones in a state that did that, and now it's commonplace. So a lot of people have followed Marin by teaming with local wastewater plants to, for food waste. There's a new state law that we have to divert 75% of all food waste, green waste, and wood waste from landfills by 2025. So there's an increase, increase need to have more processing capacity. So what you see here is when I helped permit this back from '07 to 2014, this is, everything was in pilot and demonstration projects. We looked at an anaerobic digestion facility. And, and at the time, you know, there's one, one down in South San Francisco that's working, but it's kind of small scale. And over the years, it's not as efficient. It's more efficient taking the, the food waste to Central Marin. And we're going to ramp that program up instead to meet the goals of SB 1383. On a biomass conversion facility, that's a, it uses a very clean, high temperature gasification process that makes mega watt of power. And plus, it makes a biochar. About 7% of the waste is a biochar. And a biochar is combined with compost. And we said question of that in the working lands of California, such as the Marin Carbon Project, is going on Marin. And that type of program is going on statewide now, taking compost and biochar to implement greenhouse gas reduction programs. There was a Measure C funds, the joint powers agreement among 17 agencies created the Marin Wildlife Prevention Authority. And that will generate a lot of fire debris from the urban interface with a forest sector in order to remove and remove that woody biomass. And that, those new tons would need a home. And, and that, the reason we're expanding the biomass plant from one megawatt to two was to accommodate the new tons that would come from the Measure C tonnage. And plus, we got to meet the goals of SB 1383, 75% of all organics. And all those new tons would then come to the facility for the 2-megawatt plant. Last year, I'm out of Sacramento. Last year, we helped pass a law in order to have Marin Clean Energy be part of the biomass program with the Public Utilities Commission. And what that means is that Marin Clean Energy can buy this power at pricing that would be, that would make the project affordable. So without, without that, without Marin Clean Energy, we were forced to work with Pacific Gas and Electric. And over the years, they've been tough to deal with on other projects. So we really enjoy having worked with Marin Clean Energy to make this a win, not only removing the forest debris from the urban interface, but also taking the urban biomass, making clean energy and making biochar. So what will happen when now that we are removing the anaerobic digestion, we are going to increase our food waste to Central Marin. And plus, they take some composting to down at Waste Management. They have some, down at Redwood Earth Care has some capacity, but a lot of it is preserved for Waste Management, but we're able to take some tons there. And then we take the rest of the food waste tons over to Central Marin. When we enlarge a biomass plant by going to 2, 2 megawatts, it'd be 25,000 tons a year of biomass. And it'll go 2 megawatts. What you see there on the front cover of the biomass today magazine, that's a Phoenix Energy. They have, they have a plant that's being commissioned right now up in North Fork, up in Madera County, which is 2 megawatt, and that will be commissioned soon. So Joe Garberino, being the guy that he is, is looking forward to going up there to kick the tires to see how that works in order to install that type of facility at his place in Santa Fe. And that's another bird's eye view of the facility. And that's my short presentation. I'm able to answer any questions you may have. I will stop sharing my screen unless you want me to leave out my screen. All right. Thank you for the presentation, Leslie. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. And, and pick up the work that Steve Stafford started a while ago.
Chair Pravitali, you're on mute. Chair Pravitali?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, finally. Sorry about that.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Just one moment while I get my notes here. Okay. Great. Okay. Are there any questions for the staff or the applicant? And unfortunately, I cannot see your faces, so please just shout out if you have a question.
This is Commissioner Higman. I have a couple of questions.
Please go ahead.
First, so you'll not be building the anaerobic digestion facility. And that 12 and a half or 12,500 tons of material or whatever the measure is, that'll be going to waste management and composted now. Is that, is that correct?
Well, some, the food waste will be going over to Central Marin. San HJ, as you see, we're going to increase the tons over there to take more food waste. And that, that is processed at the transfer station. And then green waste would then go over to Earth Care at Redwood.
Okay. And, and there's sufficient capacity at both to take what's, what's available now to go there and for the foreseeable future?
Definitely. Yeah. With regards to Marin, Central Marin, with regards to the 1383 waste, yes, we're going to be making a more food waste slurry to take it over there. And with regards to waste management, they have capacity for, for the green waste.
Okay. And part of the motivation for doubling the capacity of the other facility is that there's lots of material coming due to Measure C?
Well, yes, Measure C is one of them. Other one is 1383. We have to get 75% of all organics. And a third part of it, some of the current market in the Central Valley where the wood chips are going, are, those are being phased out by the airboard. So we have less of a, less market in a Central Valley, so we have to internalize it onsite.
Okay. And Measure C, so I'm guessing, I have no idea that that leads to a short-term increase in material. Is that right? Or, or is that a, is there a long-term increase in material that's a result of Measure C?
I know it's, I know it's a 10-year program. And over time, to get to all the interface for the fire prevention in county, we are estimating about 5,000 tons a year, but we are working with, with a council to see how many tons are expected. But a lot of the tons will come from the, the tons that can't go over to the Central Valley and the new tons for 1383 as well.
So there's sufficient demand for the facility for the foreseeable future?
Definitely.
All right. And finally, the facility in, in the picture that, that you showed, it's fairly tall. Are there any significant visual impacts of the facility?
The one I showed in the picture was, was gated in because of the snow load that's up in upper, upper Madera County. So the rigid box look is to ward off the snow. So it doesn't really look like that. That was just seen, but it's within the height restrictions. I think it was 48 feet. I'm not, I'll have to look at my notes, but it's within that, the height restrictions on the original CUP.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Okay. Hearing none. Let's open it up to the public hearing. And Leslie, would you mind asking the public if they have any comments or questions?
I would love to. I think the one member in attendance is from the part of the applicant team. But I will ask, if you wish to speak on this item, please use the raise the hand icon down at the bottom of your screen. And no one wishes to speak on this item.
Okay, great. Thanks, Leslie. All right. Well, let's close the public hearing. And now let's call on the commissioners to find out if they have any follow-up questions for staff. So I want to make sure I give everyone an opportunity to speak. So Commissioner Higman, do you have any other comments or questions?
I don't at this time.
Great. Commissioner Mercado?
Thanks. My question, Leslie, so this is a modification to the use permit. That use permit had existing conditions of approval are there? And I think those were attached to the resolution. Those were the existing conditions, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And these changes, I didn't see if they were called out. Were there any major changes, either mitigations or anything that were called out? I didn't see any.
No. So the way I structured this resolution, the findings and condition is that except as modified by this approval, all other findings and conditions that applied to the master use permit of 2015 still remain in full force and effect. That's why the, the prior resolutions and attachment to this resolution, so moving forward, they'll be kind of married together.
Yeah. Okay, cool. And what's, what's the, the next step? So we issued the use permit. And then is it building permit to come back for design review of that? Or is there any other oversight by DR, either design review or us again?
No. That was taken care of with the original use permit. It was a combination. If you saw the list of permits that were part of the master use permit, it included the designer view and the rest of it. So we will look at if, and if it's significantly different than what was presented, it would, it would go back. But otherwise, and I think based on what I've seen so far, it would be enough for the planning or the community department director to make it.
The determination.
Yeah.
Cool.
Correct.
And I guess my last kind of general question, honestly, like I don't have any engineering background. I read this a few times. I was, I was honestly just kind of confused. I really didn't understand kind of what was going on. So I appreciate that very high level presentation because that really helped me understand like, oh, this is what some of that meant. So I decided I appreciate that. That really helped. But no, no other questions.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Any, any more comments, Commissioner Mercado? Excellent. Thank you. Um, any, any more comments, Commissioner Mercado?
Oh, uh, no, that's it.
Okay.
Commissioner Tardy's up next.
Okay. Uh, Vice Chair Sade, do you have any comments or questions?
I do not. I just have kids in the background. I'm sorry.
Okay, great. All right. Um, let's see. Do you have any more, uh, comments or advice for us on this project?
No, um, but I'm going to second what Commissioner Mercado said, taking this over. I just want to thank Mr. Edgar, who I was on the phone with to be like, I don't understand any of this. So apologies for not being as clear, you know, making it, um, it took me a while to be like, what am I talking about? So thank you to the applicants, very much so, from staff as well.
Great. All right. Great. Well, um, it seems like there's, uh, no need for additional discussion. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendations as noted in the staff report.
Great. Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Haveman, I will second the motion.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And, uh, is there any additional discussion? Please feel free to speak up if you would like an additional discussion.
Uh, this is, uh, Commissioner Mercado. I think the one thing I didn't really extract out of this was sort of the, maybe a benefit to the community come up component. It seems like I kind of get it. Maybe if any of the commissioners, Commissioner Haveman, you seem like you kind of got your head wrapped around this, but it seemed like there's an efficiency that's coming out of this, both within the new equipment as well as with the processing that's required by the new state, the new state requirements as well as sort of our file, wild land prevention. And this project is sort of increasing efficiencies, utilizing new technology that will have a beneficial impact on the community. This will have sort of a higher efficient, better center. That's what I'm taking from it. I don't know if any other commissioners have any comments or saw it differently.
Yeah. I mean, I'll speak to that, Commissioner Mercado. I, I read it as basically upgrading the, the technology within, um, within the property or within the buildings, um, in order to, you know, kind of bring us into the future. And also it, it seems like there's a good amount of benefits in terms of sustainability. So we're, we're doing better with our waste. And we're, you know, we're kind of stewards. Hopefully the, the center will be helping us, um, be more environmental in San Rafael with our trash.
Yeah. Uh, if I understand correctly, it's creating a clean energy source at the same time that it's, um, and removing the need to, to ship all of the materials someplace else to be processed. So that's a, a double environmental benefit.
That's my understanding as well. Yeah. Great. All right. Any, any additional discussion before we, uh, conduct a roll call? Okay, great. Leslie, would you mind taking your roll call?
No, I'd love to. Um, Commissioner Harris is absent. Mr. Haveman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Smoothie is absent. Vice Chair Saudi?
Yes.
And Chair Pravatali?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Thank you, Leslie, and thank you, uh, to the applicants. Good luck with the project. All right. Now we'll move on to the director's report. Leslie, could you provide us the director's report?
Yeah. So I have a Sunday update, which is the city council had interviews on Thursday for a new planning commissioner to join your troop. Um, so I will keep you apprised that it's moving forward. So that's very exciting. Then maybe we can people, keep commissioners who are on vacation on vacation. But thanks again, Chair Pravatali for voting in. Um, another thing, and I'm going to read this so I don't mess it up. You had asked, I think it was Vice Chair Saudi about the hotels, um, the status of the hotel. So I asked, uh, actually Don Johnson, who's the chief building official. And AC Mary, which is the one downtown, is about a year from, out from opening due to, uh, water damage and repairs from the rains this winter. So a year out for that. And the other one, which is the Hampton Inn on Francisco, I believe it is. And that one, they are about ready to issue the building permits, but the overall timeline is, is yet unknown that they're about to issue building permits. That is the status of, on the hotel.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I have one other thing, um, you know, that I requested some of you who had gone through the, just kind of give a little feedback, you know, what you learned, what's the word? That nothing, no pressure, no, no test. Um, but I, all of the ones, it's another opportunity for training. And I may share my screen for a second. For the screen share goes better. Uh, here it is. Um, and it is through the Institute for Local Government and it is, um, trainings for planning commissioners and it's free of charge. And for Marin, the Noma Napa Solano in Marin Counties, it will be on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. And if you are interested, uh, the URL is ca dot ILG dot O R G, kind of forward slash PC trainings. But otherwise you can look up regional planning commissioner trainings, um, at the Institute for Local Government. So I just wanted to share that as well with you. And that is what I have for the commissioner's report. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to share my experience, um, at the conference. I'm Commissioner Haveman was there. There was a couple others that are, it was overall good to be in that environment. And like, I think that worked with other commissioners. We learned that jurisdictions don't have DRBs, which is interesting. We're one of the few. Um, there was cities from all over California. I mean, from like Barstow to like Sacramento. I mean, there was everything and anything. So it was definitely a big mix of people. I felt like I learned, I learned a good amount, especially about some newer laws. And we found out like, really, you know, um, there, there's like an overall, well, I'll say, I feel like I was, you know, reminded of things. But I felt overall that the conference material was very general. It didn't really get into specifics, especially because the sessions were so big. I mean, there was, there was a lot of sessions that were like five hundred people. And, and then even the breakout sessions were like a hundred people. So you, um, it wasn't really, you know, you didn't really get into the details of things. But I think overall it was, it was good to go and get out there. Um, I think a lot of it could have been covered online as well. Like, I don't know if it, I mean, it's nice to network, but, um, for two days. Um, I feel like because of the size of each, um, each, um, session, um, you, we could have like, they could have also done a simultaneous webcast. So like, you know, if Commissioner Mercado couldn't go or Commissioner Pravatali couldn't go, they could get the schedule and kind of log in on other times. And I think other conferences have those things. Um, but there were some great speakers there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. Um, it was very valuable, especially for me being a relatively new commissioner. Um, I learned quite a lot. Uh, there were good stuff that I thought were going to, are going to help me going forward. Um, information on C. Um, I met a fair number of commissioners from, from other places and just, you know, communicating and networking with them, I thought was beneficial. Um, it's, it's possible that the most valuable thing that came out of this particular session was actually meeting some of my fellow commissioners in person. Um, as I've never been, that was the only time I'd been in the same room with any of them. So I just found that really, really good.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Count, count, yep. Council Number Kurtz was there. Um, uh, it, one, one other thing is, is that a couple of times it was mentioned that, um, there's formal training for commissioners before they, uh, join the commission. And we do a little bit of that. Um, but I felt like was more, uh, the training was more legal, um, than practical. Um, and had conversations with other commissioners and, and, uh, and, uh, Commissioner and Council Member Kurtz. Um, she thought it was a terrific idea. So I thought I'd put it out here. And there's something that, you know, as we have a couple of new, um, commissioner, commissioners coming on board, maybe it's something to think about.
Yeah. And I would add to that, I think that the, um, the regional, uh, conference that you added or that regional training day, I actually think that would probably be more beneficial because we can really focus on the issues that are impacting our region and really talk about specific laws. And there'll probably be, um, I'm guessing it won't be as many people since it's smaller. Um, but I could, I could see that, um, being of interest. And I mean, I'd be happy to go with that and see what we can glean from it.
Yeah. I would love to join you there, but, but I, I can't on that.
Um, Chair Pravatali, did you go as well? And do you have anything else to add or feedback or takeaway or?
I did. I did. Yeah. I went, yeah. I really also enjoyed meeting the other commissioners and Rachel Kurtz. And also speaking to other commissioners from other cities, just to see how, um, you know, they operate. And I feel like, I think, I think maybe Commissioner Saudi mentioned this, I feel like we are very, um, the fact that we have the, design review board is a huge advantage for us because it seems like in other cities that, um, responsibility is put on the planning commissioners. And, you know, I felt like, instead, I didn't speak to that many people about this, but at least the sample size of two, it seemed like they felt like they just weren't really qualified to do that work. And, uh, so, yeah, and I, um, I think it's, I think the system that we have set up is good. Um, I was also, you know, surprised to learn about how a lot of, um, cities were trying to get out of their Reno requirements. And, um, you know, in really sort of unethical ways, I would say, um, in some cases. And, um, so I was also, um, you know, comforted to know that we are not trying to get out of our Reno requirements and that, you know, we are, um, we're doing something about it. So it really made me feel proud to be, um, part of this commission and part of this community and, and whatnot. I also, I had a very interesting conversation with a gentleman who's a former planner and now a planning commissioner for the city of Nevada. And, um, his name is just escaping me right now, but I feel like he's, um, you know, he's been in the game for a long time. He helped get, um, Whole Foods there and helped redevelop their, uh, downtown neighborhood. And, and I felt like, you know, just knowing I could go to him and ask questions about how he did that and, and whatnot. And actually just learning how he did that, um, just within a, a short conversation was, um, was incredibly valuable. What else can I tell you? I felt like, uh, a lot of the, um, speakers were, were very inspirational in nature as well. So, um, they sort of were, you know, it was good to feel motivated about what we're doing and, um, feel good about, um, you know, volunteering. So I, I really enjoyed it.
Great. Well, thank you all for your feedback. And I don't think, Commissioner Mercado, you didn't go correct.
No, I wish I did. It sounds great.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. It sounds really good. Yeah. But thank you. I was just, I, I meant to ask you guys last, last, last meeting and I forgot about it. So I just wanted to make sure, um, to see kind of your takeaways and if it's worthwhile, if it's something, you know, if it comes up again, we would want to offer to you all. Or you're like, no, that was kind of like, could have met them at the coffee shop down the street, but no, so thank you. Cause you're definitely, there is value of, not, I don't ever think of myself as a networker, but when you do meet other folks kind of doing what you do, it is, it is inspiring and invigorating. So I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I, I think that I would go again next year.
Yeah. Cool. I would too. I think also, um, one thing I failed to mention was, um, SB nine, there was like this whole presentation on SB nine. Super eye-opening. We found out that it was like, really like the amount of properties that you could apply SB nine to were like so minimal that like, we shouldn't really waste a lot of brain energy on that. And I think that was a law that I was like, you know, you really think, okay, this is going to really impact our city. We got to do really good, you know, like, I, I was really interested to hear what that presentation was going to be. And then when you started getting stats, you're like, oh, this is like, I mean, this law, this, you know, this can't really apply to. I don't, do you, do either of you remember the exact stat? I'm going to misquote it if I, if I say.
I want to say it was like five percent.
Of all pro, yeah. So.
Yeah.
Sounds about right.
It was not, and that could even, so that could even apply for it, you know, be qualified for it. So, you know, I don't think we should waste a lot of brain energy on it.
I think, I think it was a combination of qualified for and would opt for, right? It's the vast majority of single-family residences owners are zero inclination to, to, to drive into.
Yeah.
And then whether they could get the finance for it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Crowd being in this position. A lot of different people. It's really cool.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for, um, helping to make that happen for us. Appreciate that.
And with that, we can move on to the rest of the committee.
Yeah, I don't have anything. Um, do any of the planning commissioners have any additional communication or comments?
My only comment is thank you, Chair. You're on vacation and you rock the whole show up.
I, um, correct, did you, Leslie? I'm actually not on vacation.
Oh.
Um, on a, yeah, no, 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 it's okay. I am in Texas. I'm in West Texas. Look at this hotel room.
Early to join us.
I'm in a Holiday Inn in Grand Texas, about a hundred fifty miles west of that.
Off you go there.
Was that?
I said, hopefully you can get a decent coffee.
Hopefully. All right.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.